Abandon all of deep sanitary, $280,673. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby declare the Seventh Avenue sanitary sewer main repairs an emergency and authorizes and directs the Mayor and City Manager to hire Work Rating Contractor Incorporated to reroute the sanitary to abandon all of the deep sanitary sewer, option three, for an amount not to exceed $280,673. Passed, approved and adopted the ninth day of June 2022, ratified this 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify. May I have a motion to ratify? We have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion, Council?
Yes, Mayor, as you look at this bid, you have three, uh, three, uh, number one for, uh, one for $185,219, then the second one's $206,354. The third bid is $86,673. Uh, we, Mr. Hunter, can we have somebody elaborate what we want with the?
Option three.
It's the same thing, but different options. It's got different deals, there's different options on there.
Mr. Woody.
Yes, sir, Councilman Day. As you see there, three options. The first option was just to do the repair work itself. The second option, as you see, was just to do half of the road line and abandon it. And the third option, which we felt was the best option to bring before y'all, was to abandon the entire line because of the depth of it. That way, in the future, the city employees, we can make those repairs ourself and I have to rely on the contractors. And that way, we can get to those repairs a lot quicker than, instead of having sewers going into Auburn Creek, Mill Creek area.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
Yes, sir.
I just want our citizens to be aware of those options, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Any other comments or discussion? If not, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Council proceeding on on administration, we have resolution number 2022-104 to be ratified in reference to authorizing and directing the Mayor to sign documents with ADECA for grant assistance for electrical, electric, excuse me, electric vehicle charging station at the 14th Street parking garage. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, ADECA, is providing grants for electric vehicle charging stations on non-interstate corridors. And whereas Phoenix City has three electric vehicle charging stations throughout the city and would like to expand its electric vehicle charging infrastructure to meet the demands of increased electric vehicle presence. And whereas the estimated cost for the project is $18,828. And whereas the ADECA Energy Division Grant will provide 75% of the project cost, which is estimated to be $14,121, and the city to provide the remaining 25%, which is estimated to be $4,707. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the submission of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its Mayor and City Manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information as may be required. Be it further resolved that the City of Phoenix City will provide $4,707 for the cost share requirement to make project whole, and we will be responsible for any cost overruns associated with the project. Passed, approved and adopted this 10th day of June 2022, ratified the 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you so much. Council, we have all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Uh, motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify.
Yes. We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
We have the motion to ratify by Mrs. Johnson. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Council, any comments or questions or discussion? Okay, there seems to be none. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Council, on administration, is resolution number 2022-105 to be ratified in reference to authorizing and directing the Mayor to sign documents with ADECA for grant assistance for electric vehicle charging station at the Phoenix City Youth Sports Complex. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, ADECA, is providing grants for electric vehicle charging stations on non-interstate corridors. And whereas Phoenix City has three electric vehicle charging stations throughout the city and would like to expand its electric vehicle charging infrastructure to meet the demands of increased electric vehicle presence by adding four AC level two charging stations at the Phoenix City Youth Sports Complex. And whereas the estimated total cost of the project is $20,598. And whereas the ADECA Energy Division Grant will provide 75% of the project cost, which is estimated to be $15,448, and the city to provide the remaining 25%, which is estimated to be $5,150. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the submission of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its Mayor and City Manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information as may be required. Be it further resolved that the City of Phoenix City will provide $5,150 for the cost share requirement to make the project whole, and will be responsible for any cost overruns associated with the project. Passed, adopted and approved on the 10th day of June 2022, ratified on the 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee. Mr. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have the motion by Councilman Day. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion, Council?
Just a brief comment, Mayor. So with three that we currently have and adding eight more, which will make it a total of 11, have we done any type of study or assessment to see if there was a need? And hopefully the grant is approved because we do know that the Energy Division Grant will be something that will be beneficial to our community, and the electric automotive industry is up and coming. Have we done any type of study to see if we're using what we already have and?
We're using what we already have. This is a mandate, and I hope a lot of people are watching, this is a mandate through the President of the United States. And if you look around, you see more and more electric cars, it's the way we're going unless you're gonna have a hybrid. But yes, they are being used, but we're making sure we can meet the demand so we're getting out in front of these things.
Absolutely.
To make sure this is taken care of. So we want to make sure we're not behind, but yes, all that is in place. We would study with getting the grants and stuff like that. So that's what this is all about.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion, Council? If not, at this time, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, Council proceeding on, we have resolution number 2022-106 to be ratified in reference to purchasing one caterpillar, caterpillar 826K compactor from Thompson Cat through Sourcewell Vendor Number 032119-CAT in an amount not to exceed $987,461.48. Mrs. Lee?
Yes. Whereas the State of Alabama Examiners of Public Accounts has reviewed and approved the competitive bidding process used by Sourcewell. And whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase the property here and after described for the refused disposal division of the Energy Public Works Department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that one caterpillar 826K compactor shall be purchased through Sourcewell Vendor Number 032119-CAT from Thompson Cat in an amount not to exceed $987,461.48. Passed, adopted and approved on the 10th day of June 2022, ratified on the 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify. May I have a motion?
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have the motion by Councilman Gordon, and that's the second?
Yes, Councilman Day.
We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Uh, any comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Oh, we want to aim to to elaborate on that.
Oh.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
It's very important, I would.
It says that's a hot dollar either, which says yesterday, or did you elaborate for the citizen stuff, please, you okay?
And tell them the greatest part of it, we're also constructing a new landfill.
Right. Yes, sir. So this will be, as y'all all know, we're in the process of constructing our new CND landfill expansion currently. So we're hoping to be finished with that in October. So in order to have, to utilize the landfill like we needed to, we've got to upgrade our compactor. So basically, that was purchasing a new compactor. The other one's 20 years old. This one's much heavier, we'll get much better compaction with it. And well, we had to get it ratified because if we didn't get on the list with Caterpillar then, we were gonna miss the April deadline. So if we purchase this now, we won't get the equipment until April. So we want to be able to, as soon as our landfill comes online, we want to be able to have the equipment there so we can start utilizing it at that same time. So it is a very expensive piece of equipment. Unfortunately, everything's real expensive right now. Uh, we did see it basically triples since the last time we purchased one 20 years ago. This is a heavier machine, uh, and it does have some additional, uh, wheels that we hope to get better compaction with, so we're excited to start our new landfill expansion with a new piece of equipment.
And the cost of the landfill?
The cost of the landfill is like $1.4 million.
And you also stated that it would arrive in April, uh, next year?
That's when we're told.
Hopefully.
Now, one of the things that we've done, we got ahead of the game, we locked that price in, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Is still be stationary, that, that amount.
Yes, sir.
What type of warranty comes with that?
It's a four-year warranty on it, and one reason we wanted to use Caterpillars because they do have local sources, like this is being purchased out of the Oglala Office. So we've had very good service calls from them and everything like that, so they have been very, uh, even with our old equipment now, they come out there and work on it whenever we need them.
That's good.
Thank you.
Just the cost of doing business, that's all you gotta have. That's just the cost of doing business. Any other comments or discussion? Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, Council, uh, we have a resolution in reference to public hearing for the proposed 2020-2023 fiscal year proposed budget. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Section 505 of the City Charter of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, provides that the City Council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. And whereas the proposed budget has been submitted to the City Council, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that a public hearing shall be held on Thursday, July the 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM Eastern Time on the 2022-2023 proposed budget, and that public notice shall be given in the Citizen News of East Alabama at least seven days prior to said public hearing. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the public notice attached heretofore is approved and shall be advertised as provided herein by the City Clerk of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lee?
Do you want me to read the public notice?
Yes.
The public notice reads as follows. The City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July the 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM Eastern Time in the Martin Ida Lauer Park Community Center, located at 3743 Moon Lake Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, on the 2022-2023 proposed budget. A copy of the 2022-2023 proposed budget is on file in the Office of the City Clerk, 601 12th Street, Phoenix City, Alabama. This proposed budget is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. City of Phoenix City, Alabama, Melanie Lee, City Clerk. It'll be published on June 30th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution as well as the reading of the public notice. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, uh, motion, Councilman Day? And second, Councilman Johnson?
That's fine.
We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, Council, we have the motion and the second. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Council proceeding on on administration, is a resolution in reference to premium payments made to employees with American Rescue Plan funds. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, was impacted and continues to be impacted by the COVID-19 virus and its variants, as well as the ongoing economic impacts of such. And whereas on March the 11th, 2021, the federal government enacted the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And whereas pursuant to provisions of the ARPA, the Department of Treasury has issued rules regarding the implementation of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. And whereas the City Manager, as Chief Executive Officer for the City of Phoenix City, has analyzed the job duties performed by city staff during the COVID emergency. And whereas the City Manager has determined that all employees of the city employed from July the 1st, 2021 until June the 30th, 2022, are all eligible workers as the term is defined by the Department of Treasury regulations. These workers were and continue to be needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential critical infrastructure, and were and continue to be critical to protect the health and well-being of the residents of the City of Phoenix City in providing public safety, maintenance of essential critical infrastructure, including drainage, roadways, water and sewer services, sanitation, assistance with activities for the population within the city, and the support of operations of such. And whereas the Mayor and City Council are in agreement with this assessment and believes that providing appropriate premium pay, as the term is defined in the relevant Department of Treasury regulations, as well as the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, is a proper use of fiscal recovery funds. And whereas each full-time employee is to be granted $100 per month for each full-month time employment with the City of Phoenix City during the period of July the 1st, 2021 through June the 30th, 2022, for a total of up to $1,200. Employees shall be in active status on the date in which payment is scheduled, July the 1st, 2022, in order to qualify for payment. And whereas regular full-time employees hired during the period of July the 1st, 2021 through June the 30th, 2022, if hired the 1st through the 15th of a month, the $100 premium will be paid for that month. If hired the 16th through the end of the month, the $100 premium pay is not to be paid for that month. And whereas each employee is to be granted $50 per month for each full month of part-time employment with the City of Phoenix City during the period of July the 1st, 2021 through June the 30th, 2022, for a total of up to $600. Employees shall be in active status on the date in which payment is scheduled, July the 1st, 2022, and qualify for payment. And whereas part-time employees hired during the period of July the 1st, 2021 through June the 30th, 2022, if hired the 1st through the 15th of a month, the $50 premium pay will be paid for that month. If hired the 16th through the end of the month, the $50 premium pay is not to be paid for that month. And whereas the City Manager is hereby authorized to make payments to all employees based on the clause that we stated, the said total of payment totaling to approximately $401,650 and related employer FICA payment for the pay totaling to $30,726.23. And whereas the City Manager and Finance Director are authorized to use fiscal recovery funds paid to the City of Phoenix City as a non-investment unit for the premium pay and payments. And whereas the City Manager and Finance Director are further authorized to submit appropriate project and expenditure reports reflecting said premium pay payment to employees to include related FICA employer payments. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize this premium payment to qualifying employees in consideration of the COVID-19 pandemic. Said premium payments shall be reduced by federal, state or local taxes to include appropriate judicial process. The City Manager and Finance Director authorized to remove the funds used to pay said premium pay payments, as well as employer-related FICA expenses from the fiscal recovery funds appropriated to the city pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, and to submit the appropriate project and expenditure reports supporting said expenditures under the Act. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Drink you some water.
That was a lot.
Take a deep breath. Breathe. Council, we have heard the, uh, reading of the resolution by a clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, Councilwoman Johnson, that's the second, Mr. Day. We have that, Ms. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Comments, questions or discussion? Mr. Hunter, anything you want to expound on this?
No, it's just something that's very vital if we take care of employees and looking at the inflation rate and especially our thorough breadth that's hanging in with us, very dedicated employees that's working real hard to make sure we can try to maintain this city. We are, we're suffering from some, some things we never faced in America right now. People resigning from jobs, probably over 4 million per month. It's something we hadn't seen in long, or never seen. Something we never thought we would witness, but we have some good employees that are trying to take care of their families, trying to deal with the demands of trying to do that. So this is something, a good thing that they have fed our town through the state level that's helping us there to do the things we need to do. And I appreciate everything down towards the new one. I appreciate this council for seeing that and helping us do that, and hopefully by sticking together, we can try to stick this thing out until things change.
And the number one asset of the city, or any organization, or the people. Obviously, you have to take care of them, but I, I do want to say this before I call for the vote, is that I know the council and myself, we get a lot of calls from citizens, rightfully so, about getting certain things done or cutting grass, but as we just about say, if we do not say at each meeting, just be patient with us. Almost half of our work staff is not working, we've been reduced that much. You all have heard us say we have supervisors that are doing duties, driving, so just be patient with us and, and, you know, it's maybe not as expeditiously as you want, but we're not disregarding it, just be patient with us because we are, we're sucking it up to be able to get those things done because of the work staff. So, uh, as I stated, we all get calls and we all sharing that same message. It is the truth and the gospel. Uh, so just be patient with us and at, at some point, as soon as we can, uh, those matters will be taken care of. Okay? And we all say that all the time to our citizens, and we certainly understand, but just, just be patient with us. So with that said, any other comments or discussion?
I'd like to piggyback on what the Mayor said, as I stated to Mr. Hunter right before we got started. You know, I've received three calls, and I was telling him, I went around the street, he said it's stuck and sitting, and I said the same thing that the Mayor just said. I asked the person to be patient with us, we are short of help, we need help. We asked them to be patient with us on camera right now, just be patient, it'll be taken care of.
And even, I know, uh, I've gotten calls, and I think I can say the same thing for the councils, particularly our cemetery. We, we, we understand that thoroughly, in, in your calling, we understand that, and we know that's precious, but just, just please bear with us. Uh, we promise you, we'll get done, just, just, just bear with us, and please, please just understand that we, our staff is very short, just like anywhere in this country. Uh, so just bear with us and we will get to it, I promise you. So with that said, if there's not any other comments or discussion, I would like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on, Council on Administration, we have a resolution in reference to filing an application with ALDOT for the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, also known as TAP, T-A-P, for fiscal year 2023, to upgrade pedestrian facilities along 14th Street from Broad Street to Ninth Avenue. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation, ALDOT, is soliciting applications for the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, TAP, for fiscal year 2023. And whereas as part of the city's commitment to upgrading pedestrian facilities to meet ADA requirements, city staff would like to submit an application for this funding to make improvements along 14th Street from Broad Street to Ninth Avenue. And whereas if the grant application is approved, the project will be funded with $1 million, 80% 800,000 federal and 20% 200,000 local. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its Mayor and City Manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information to ALDOT as may be required. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Thank you. Council, we've heard the resolution. I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion by Councilman Gordy. May I have a second, Council?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion, Council? All right, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, I heard, um, Ms. Johnson had a meeting earlier, and when I walked in, I heard part of the discussion, and part of that discussion was basically dealing with, this is the upper part of the corridor of 14th Street, is dealing with 13th Street. And she was explaining, and she did a good job of explaining to them, we have plans together already that's there to combat what's in place there and make sure we can change this whole corridor. And, and those plans are very costly, and we're paying for them, we have groups in town that's working with our economic department and planning department, engineering department. But this is a part, and this is a good thing that they're trying to obtain from the engineer to upgrade, because we've already done from Wrightwood Avenue all the way over to Broad Street, this right here, to continue that to Ninth Avenue with the post office, and then looking at other parts, it's taking it all the way out to Five Point. But then also going down to the plan that they're putting together that the citizens will be able to interact then to take a look at the corridors coming down 14th Street as far as property owners, trying to get them to upgrade their areas, trying to improve the purpose as they're actually operating from 285 pass and then comes into more black roads. So this is another step towards those two roads that run straight out to go back out to 280 is coming in. So this is a good thing, whenever you could do a million dollars worth of work, they're matching, which is what we value, we can do that. But it's just a part of that process of continuing out there. And I think with you, Ms. Patrick, that I heard talking about, with you acting about it the last time too, so just stay on it and stick with us, and, you know, it's happening, you know, and that's part of the district too, we've been quarantined about it, you know, and, um, and I heard Ms. Johnson explaining that, you know, it's, it's, it's all the truth, is what's going on, it's happening. But thanks for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Let me just also add, um, if anyone, you know, remains after the meeting, I do have copies of the different areas, and, uh, hopefully, like I said, this will be that continuous improvement, uh, in the, uh, the center part of the district that is so well-needed and, uh, and it's, it's way overdue. But again, with the matching grant and the work that your team has done to solicit funds to help us do this, is very appreciative.
Yes, and I heard you, you know, I like seeing everything transpire and it was going good, because people don't understand the difference in what the city don't own, you know, and you have to look, you have to control it from where it's at through the zoning[1750.33] process and what to be there and what shouldn't be there as we go and that continues. So it's, 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 it's being heard pretty good, so it went, it went good. That was a good job.
Thank you.
Sure was.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. With that said, at this time, counsel, I'd like to call for the vote.
I think we took it already, Mayor.
Oh, okay, keep me straight. Yeah, it's his fault.
That's my mistake. I couldn't get, I couldn't.
No.
I went to the other part.
You better say something. Okay, counsel, proceeding on?
Yes, sir.
Beg your pardon, Ms. Johnson?
Oh, I see, yes, sir.
Okay. Proceeding on, on administration, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with ALDOT for equipment upgrade, upgrade for existing streetlights on U.S. Highway 431 South, street light replacement project. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation, ALDOT, has requested the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, to execute a permit for the modification and equipment upgrade of the existing streetlights on U.S. Highway 431 pursuant to Exhibit A attached here to. And whereas the City Council has considered the request of ALDOT to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement to permit the installation of the streetlights as identified herein above. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize as follows. One, that the mayor and city manager are hereby authorized to execute the permit Exhibit A with the Alabama Department of Transportation to permit the following. A, upgrade and installation of new streetlights on U.S. Highway 431. And B, operation and maintenance of streetlights on U.S. Highway 431. Two, that the mayor and city manager are authorized to execute any documents necessary to permit the construction of the new streetlights provided herein above as required by the Alabama Department of Transportation. Three, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion?
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor, this is 431 South and are these energy efficient lights? And yeah, I know you don't have a time frame on it because we got to go to state department before we can do anything else.
Yes, sir, these will be converted to existing lights out there on 431 now are not LED lights. I know y'all have been hearing through the past council meetings where we've been going through with Alabama Power to try to get them to upgrade those lights to LED. So this is the last piece of that puzzle. So those lights are on ALDOT right away. So we have to get a permit so Alabama Power can come in and upgrade those lights to LED, but then the city will be responsible for maintaining the lights. And also through our contract with Alabama Power, they're going to be responsible for maintaining the actual LED bulb. So they are now more efficient, but it'll be brighter light out there also.
That's great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other comments or discussion, question? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also on the administration, counsel, is a resolution in reference to adding an additional half day to be observed for the Independence Day holiday, July the 5th, 2022. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that July the 4th, 2022 is observed as the official Independence Day holiday for 2022 for the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. An additional half day, July the 5th, 2022, working from 1:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m., shall also be observed for the year 2022. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
A second.
I'm right-handed, so I'm here from the right to the left, so.
That's fine, Mayor.
With that said, that's a second by Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any comments, questions or discussion?
Yeah, just a brief comment and I'm gonna ask Parks and Rec to come forward and talk about the Fourth of July event, but thi- this is needed, you know, working a half a day. It is something that I'm, I, I would say, you know, our Independence Day and, and have our workers, you know, come in a half a day because of how it's falling and how we're going to observe it. But let me have Parks and Rec, if, Mr. Hunter, if you wouldn't mind, talk about, we're bringing back the Fourth of July event and the day and time in which it will be held.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and counsel, the Fourth of July celebration will be the first time since we've had since 2020, closing. The fireworks celebration will be at amphitheater, we'll shoot them from the bridge. I think the show, the event starts around 2:00 o'clock and fireworks will be shot off around dark, so we estimate around nine. It just kind of depends on the flow, the lighting and all of it and the weather, but we're excited about it. For like I said, it's the first time we've had it back in Phoenix City, so we're excited. Hopefully they're glad to come out and enjoy the afternoon and see some good fireworks.
Was it 2019 or 2020 we had the last one?
Uh, we actually shot them, we shot them in 2019. We didn't shoot them in 2020.
Okay.
So this will be, this would have been our third year.
Okay.
We actually missed the two years.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, we do hope the citizens come out and enjoy this festivity.
Yeah, and it will be on the Fourth of July, that Monday. A lot of people have asked if it was going to be on Saturday, but no, it will be on the Fourth of July, that Monday.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Any other comments, discussion or question for a call for the vote? If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, counsel, proceeding on the Engineering and Public Works Department, we have a resolution in reference to accepting a quote from CNH Construction Services LLC for guard rail installation at various locations of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, in an amount not to exceed $49,685. Mrs. Lee?
Yes. Whereas the City of Phoenix City has several locations of guard rail in need of repair for which it utilizes to help assure safe travel for the public. And whereas the Phoenix City Public Works Department has purchased the needed guard rail. And whereas the Phoenix City Engineering Department has attempted to obtain three quotes for the installation of the purchased guard rail and CNH Construction Services LLC provided the only quote in the amount of $49,685. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to accept and sign quote from CNH Construction Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $49,685 for guard rail installation at various locations throughout the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I, at this time, ask for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion?
Uh, Mr. Hunter, when they get started on this, I was just thinking about the 1020 at the afternoon. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, discussion, question? If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Council on the Engineering and Public Works Department, is a resolution in reference to authorizing the purchase of one 2023 freight liner with HD Industries Patcher purchase under Sourcewell contract number 060920-NAF from National Auto Fleet Group in an amount not to exceed $227,305. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the State of Alabama Examiners of Public Accounts has reviewed and approved the competitive bidding process used by Sourcewell. And whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase the property herein after described for the Streets and Drainage Division and the Engineering Public Works Department. And whereas National Auto Fleet Group provided a quote for one 2023 freight liner with HD Industries Patcher in an amount not to exceed $227,305. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the Engineering Public Works Department to purchase one 2023 freight liner with HD Industries Patcher purchased under Sourcewell contract number 060920-NAF from National Auto Fleet Group in an amount not to exceed $227,305. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution from our clerk, the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any comments or discussion?
I'll wait till we get through this, I'll wait till we get through this, please.
Okay. There's no comments, questions or discussion. I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also on the Engineering and Public Works Department, counsel, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the purchase of one 2022 Caterpillar 317 CG excavator purchase under Sourcewell vendor number 032119-CAT from Thompson Cat in an amount not to exceed $251,483.74. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the State of Alabama Examiners of Public Accounts has reviewed and approved the competitive bidding process used by Sourcewell. And whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to purchase the property herein after described for the Streets and Drainage Division and the Engineering Public Works Department. And whereas Thompson Cat provided a quote for one 2022 Caterpillar 317 GC excavator in an amount not to exceed $251,483.74. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the Engineering Public Works Department to purchase one 2022 Caterpillar 317 GC excavator purchased under Sourcewell vendor number 032119-CAT from Thompson Cat in the amount of $251,483.74. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, counsel, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any comments or discussion?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Day, you, you had something?
Yes, uh, Mayor, on yesterday, I, uh, said these are high dollar items and, uh, the 251,483.74 and the 227,000.305. Uh, those two came to 478,000.788.74. Can we get somebody to operate for the citizens of Phoenix City, uh, for, please? Okay?
Yes, sir, Mr. Day, this is equipment that was needed in our Streets and Drainage Division. The first one is the pothole patcher. And so this is the piece of equipment that we would use to go out on the street to repair any utility cuts, to repair any potholes. It's the piece of equipment that actually keeps, that we go pick up the asphalt, keeps asphalt hot and then that we are able to use an auger to get it out into the street. So this is going to be replacing the old one that we have. We will keep the old one as a backup, but we're having lots of problems with the auger and that and it stays in the shop more than it's out on the street. And the next piece of equipment is a excavator, so that's the big track code piece of equipment that we have to use if we have to dig ditches or lay pipe or anything like that. So we're working on, we got 2,000 mile right now that we're using, so this is something that's going to help not only public works, but in the event that utilities needs to use it or anybody else in the city that has the proper equipment operators, they'll be able to use this piece of equipment too. I know it will help utilities out for sure.
Okay.
Uh, and they are expensive pieces of equipment. We are going to put them on a five-year lease once they are purchased, but these are things that are needed every day and I just want to put out the tagline there, so the city's going to have some really nice equipment, so we, any equipment operators that want to come work for the city, please call in.
I like that.
Or anybody else who wants to cut grass or do anything else, please call in.
I like that.
Lots of, lots of jobs out there that, you know, good place to work. Thank you.
Hey, so let me ask you this. Uh, Mr. We've done it here, those numbers, those prices, they're, they're stationary. I mean, uh, they're not going to be able to go up because we're not going to get that old equipment right away.
Right, yes, sir. Mr. Ray, I want to say they're stationary, the world that we're in right now, I, I can't make promises. They're telling us that it's going to be stationary, but if it takes, you know, a year and a half to get the piece of equipment, you know, I'm not sure if they're going to want us to revisit it there. But that's why Mr. Hunter wanted us to go ahead and get this on now, so we can try to go ahead and get it on order and get it to us as quick as we can.
There was possibilities that they could revisit it there and we have to revisit it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
We hope not.
I hope not.
The reason why we're doing this is to prevent that.
Yeah.
Try to prevent it.
Get it locked in.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other comments, discussion, question? All right, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, counsel, now in the Finance Department, we have a resolution for reference to rejecting all bids received copy paper. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Finance Department received bids for copy paper on May the 11th, 2022. And whereas two bids were submitted, and whereas the two, of the two bids submitted, the product prices provided by one vendor was relatively higher than the prices quoted from previous years and the other vendor was unable to guarantee a standard price throughout the term of the contract. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, authorizes the mayor and city manager to reject all copy paper bids. Passed, approved and adopted this 22nd day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you so much. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. May I ask for a motion at this time, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Comments, discussion? Okay. Since there's not any, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, counsel, proceeding on the Fire Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to accept their proposals from Sunbelt Fire for the purchase of four GISCBA's with additional cylinders in an amount not to exceed $38,168. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Phoenix City Fire Rescue has solicited pricing for four MSA G1 air packs, four face masks, eight MSA 4500 PSI and 45-minute carbon threaded cylinders. And whereas the parent single source meeting requires specifications for the four MSA G1 air packs, four face masks, eight MSA 4500 PSI and 45-minute carbon threaded cylinders is Sunbelt Fire. And whereas Sunbelt Fire has submitted a proposal in amount not to exceed $38,168. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from Sunbelt Fire in the price of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars for four M S A G one air packs, four face masks, eight M S A forty-five hundred P S I and forty-five minute carbon threaded cylinders, provided it meets the required specifications. If approved, the money for the purchase will come from the red light fund. Passed, approved and adopted this twenty-second day of June, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Gordy. Comments, discussion? Okay, there's not any at this time. We'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council on the police department. We have a resolution in reference to declaring personal property as surplus and disposing of the nominal sum of one dollars in other valuable consideration to Greg Lahr for his twenty-five years of public service. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has items of personal property which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of the unneeded personal property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following described property is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of for the consideration of the nominal sum of one dollar and other valuable considerations to Greg Lahr in recognition of his twenty-five years of public service and dedication to the Phoenix City Police Department and the citizens of the City of Phoenix City. One H and K V P nine nine millimeter caliber semi-automatic handgun, manufacturer serial number two two four dash two six eight zero six nine and one badge Blackington Model B seven three six R. Passed, approved and adopted this twenty-second day of June, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by councilman Day. May I have a second? Second by councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion, council? Question?
Just a brief comment, Mayor. Um, once again, we just want to thank Officer Greg Lahr for his twenty-five years of service. Um, that's what it's all about. The city is continuously looking for great people, likeness to Greg. The objective is to recruit and retain. And in twenty-five years of service shows dedication, shows commitment and loyalty to the company that hired him. So thank, publicly, we want to thank him for his service.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Okay, any other comments? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, council is a license application. This is a first reading. It is an application for a bonding company license submitted by Alexis Wooden Elliott and Cortez Elliott of A and C, excuse me, A C Bail Bonding LLC located at ten thirty-fifth Avenue Southeast, Suite A, Decatur, Alabama, three five six oh one. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, the first letter is from the Assistant Chief of Police. I have reviewed this application for bonding company license. Going to have no objection to the issuance of this license to these applicants based upon a criminal background investigation. The second letter is from the fire chief. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Alexis Wooden Elliott and Cortez Elliott for A C Bail Bonding LLC located at ten thirty-fifth Avenue Southeast, Suite A, Decatur, Alabama. The applicants have applied for a new business license for bail bonds. However, the new address is not located within Phoenix City Fire Rescue's jurisdiction. The last letter is from Deputy Building Official. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Alexis Wooden Elliott and Cortez Elliott for A C Bail Bonding LLC located at ten thirty-fifth Avenue Southeast, Suite A, for a bonding company license. This facility is located outside the building department's policing jurisdiction. This office has no objections to the approval of this license.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we have all heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading. May I have a motion?
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have the motion by councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion? Question? There seems to be none. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Thank you, counsel. Uh, we appreciate it. And again, thanks to, uh, to the citizen that has shown up and to everyone who's watching through C T V Bean. We certainly appreciate it. And again, at this time, uh, I'd just like to say to everyone, just please be patient with us as we've stated and you would more than likely continue to hear that from us because it is factual and we're not disregarding you. So with that said, at this time, uh, counsel, I'd like to ask, are there any comments or discussion that any of the council members like to have?
Yes, Mayor, uh, I'd like to remind the citizen that, uh, it's, uh, we in such a, I can't really elaborate on that like I want to, but it's, we in such a heat wave, shall I say. And then those citizens that live along, the elder citizens that live along, uh, please, ma'am, please, uh, let's keep an eye on them. Let's check on them. If you have some neighbors, you know, the elder citizens out there because it's really, really hot out there. I speak for myself. I was going to New York, worked out there today and I got a little overheated. So let us keep an eye on our elder citizens and also don't leave your pets and your car, you know, while you're running to the grocery store and what have you. Just give us a reminder, our citizens. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have.
Thank you. And other council member?
Uh, I have one, uh, mayor and council. I just want to, um, say a special thank you to the citizens that came out, um, to the meeting prior to our council meeting. It really means a lot for me to hear from you, to see you so that you can continue to be, uh, involved and engage in what is going on in the community. So once again, thank you so much for, um, your time, uh, shared with me. I really appreciate that. Uh, also want to thank, um, Henry and the staff, uh, Mr. Joseph, uh, for, you know, getting the table set up for our refreshments. Thank you for doing that. And, uh, to the other staff that kind of helped me along the way. Thank you, city clerk, for the information that you brought forward, the, uh, sheets that, uh, if anyone had any concerns or issue and wanted to address those, um, it was prepared by our city clerk office. So thank you for that. But again, as I continued to, uh, talk about what is most important in Phoenix City, which is the people, us. All of us, we're in this together. Uh, we, we're continuously moving forward with a lot of projects. We got a lot going on in positively Phoenix City. And so thank you again for all the support that you continue to give. Share the information with your neighbors about the importance of, uh, keeping the community clean and safe, uh, which is, is, like I said, we're all in this together. So once again, thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, councilman Gordy, anything? All right, Mr. Hunter, anything you want to add or take away? All right, well, again, uh, thanks to all our department head and the employees of the city. Uh, the ones that we do have, uh, probably working more than they have at this point, but they're doing it without complaining. So again, I can't, I can't stress this enough. Just, just be patient with us. We don't want you to stop keeping us accountable, but I will tell you, when you call, uh, we, you will get a call back from all of us. If you call any of us, you will do that. But the message is that we want to make sure everyone understands is that we're working very hard. Our employees are working very hard. So, you know, give them some kudos and we're in this thing together. Uh, we are good, great city, uh, good community. Uh, we're striving every day to make it even better. So we need all of us to, to be there and to lift each other up. So as I always say, let's be a lifter and not a leaner, particularly in today's environment. So with all that, we'd like to thank C T V Bean for bringing this and, uh, please keep us accountable and may God continue to bless us, uh, individually as well as collectively. Thank you all so much. We do stand adjourned. Bye-bye.